To call tonight's regular meeting into order. Item two, recommendation that the agenda for the regular council meeting of March 23rd, 2015 be adopted and circulated with the additional late agenda item 11B, report from city planner regarding rezoning and development permit to allow stuffing of containers at the property located at 1620 Prince Rupert Boulevard. Moved by councillor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Kenny. Any discussion? Call those in favor. Any opposed? Motion carried. We'll move on to item 4A, a presentation from Chief Financial Officer Corinne Bombin regarding response to public inquiry.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council and citizens of Prince Rupert. After the public consultation meeting held on March 9th at the Investor Center, we felt that today we could shed some light on a couple of the questions that were posed during the question period. We will address two questions with some examples we hope will inform the public. We have presented the budget which indicates a shortfall of $220,000 resulting in the need for a mill rate increase in order to balance the budget. One of the questions asked was why are we not funding the shortfall with a dividend from Legacy Inc.? This slide answers that question. Using legacy funds to alleviate the incremental operational increases yearly can have dire consequences. In this example, we have used legacy to offset the yearly increase in cost of 3%. Remember, this is a hypothetical, so we're assuming 3% increase in expenses every single year for illustrative purposes. We've considered in this example that major projects don't go ahead and the funds available in legacy are depleted by year eight. This means in year eight, the expenses have gone up from up to $614,940 when in year one they were at $500,000. Using legacy to keep mill rate increases at zero every year until there is no money available from legacy results in a mill rate increase in year eight of 23%. And that would be the bottom percent down here. So the increase in mill rate is zero all the way along because any incremental increase of 3% in expenses all the way up to year eight has been funded by legacy. And that's over here. This is not reasonable or understandable to the people living in our community in year eight. The current method of making small incremental increases to fund operational costs results in smoother rate changes and keeps pace with normal operational increases such as contractual and statutory obligations and normal increases in cost of supplies and services. Staff are always cognizant of the fact that we are not just the stewards of the people living in the community today, but we are also responsible to the community of tomorrow. One of the questions asked as well was how the mill rate percentage increase affected the mill rate itself. This is how it works. Let's use the following example for simplicity. Suppose we start with a mill rate of 10.00 and the proposed increase to the mill rate was 5%. This would result in 10.00 times 5%, that equals .50. We then take our beginning mill rate of 10.00 and add the calculated amount of .50 which equals 10.50. That would be our final proposed mill rate. A mill rate percent increase of 5% is not the beginning mill rate of 10.00 plus 5, which would equal a new mill rate of 15. That is not the way that the mill rate increases work. Finally, here is the impact of the proposed 1.9% increase to the existing beginning mill rate for the residential class for 2015. We started with a mill rate of 7.23906. 1.9% of this rate is 0.13754. We add 7.23906 to 0.13754 and arrive at our final proposed 2015 residential class mill rate of 7.3766. We hope this short presentation has been helpful to the citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Bombin. Okay, so I'd like to, recommendation that the regular meeting be suspended and the committee of the whole meeting be convened. Moved by councillor Kenny. Seconded by councillor Riddhawa. Call those in favor. Okay, motion carried. Okay, so now we'll move into the committee of the whole. So I'd like to call the committee of the whole meeting of council to order. Recommendation that the agenda for the committee of the whole meeting of March 23rd, 2015 be adopted and circulated. Moved by councillor Riddhawa, seconded by councillor Murrow. Call those in favor. Motion carried. Okay, first we have a petition from Mr. Westbaker regarding Rushbrook parking fees. And just please state your name and your address for the corporate administrator. Oh, just on the mic would be great too, for the people at home. Oh, just click the green button there, sorry.
This is good.
Yeah, perfect.
Name's Westbaker. Live at 321 Crestview Drive, Prince Rupert. And the reason I've come today representing actually quite a few people is I'd like to have the Rushbrook float rates changed and make some changes to the charges or non-charges for Rushbrook. Maybe I'll just read this because I wrote it, what you guys got in your package, I found out some things afterwards, is not quite accurate. So maybe I'll read this. Also, before I start, what I'd be proposing is to change this schedule. There does not seem to be a bylaw about the Rushbrook and city staff was quite helpful, but we couldn't find it. So really, we're just asking to change or add an item to this schedule of the Rushbrook float rates. So perhaps I could hand this out?
Sure, absolutely. I just had it to the, or I guess we have, coming around for sure. Thank you.
Okay. So, we propose to permit free parking for all daytime users of Rushbrook floats with their vehicles and boat trailers from October 1st to May 1st. Presently, only a small number of locals launch from Rushbrook in the winter and the lot is mostly empty. Cal Bay parking is free year-round, so why not allow the fishers to use Rushbrook year-round, at least in the wintertime, free? The other change would be to add the category of resident taxpayer to the payment schedule, which I just handed out, for the annual pass at Rushbrook floats. Resident taxpayers, homeowners and business owners, would be entitled to buy one annual pass for $100. The pass would be good from April 1st to April 1st of every year, just kind of like the fishing license. Residents taxpayers could buy their pass when they pay their annual utilities invoice, which is due by the end of March, or their land taxes. This would help offset the high taxes of resident taxpayers. The rest of the rates given on the schedule for an annual pass would remain the same. The idea would also prevent some of the congestion at the launch because many locals park their trailers elsewhere and walk to their trailers or call someone to bring down their trailers. Meanwhile, their boats are tied up at the dock while people are waiting for them to show up. The second part of our petition is a request to properly maintain the ramp at Rushbrook floats. Right now, it's in terrible shape. Sections of the asphalt are ripped off and on low tide, there is not enough ramp. Boat trailers are damaged when they drop off the end of the ramp and/or hit the rock just beyond the end of the ramp on low tide. Many tourist boats and trailers have been damaged. It's basically, it's actually embarrassing and very annoying to have to wait around to launch on low tide. Most people agree that we don't need another paving job at the top of the ramp, on the road leading to the ramp, and we don't, although it'd be nice to have a setup like Port Ed, but we don't really need to have new floats. But what we do need is to have the ramp properly fixed up so people don't damage their trailers when they try to pull them up or put them down in the water. A ramp, kind of like Port Ed's, simple and functional would be great. Surely, if the city can afford to pay, to put in 51 slips for yachts, it can, it can keep the Rushbrook ramp functional and in decent shape. From talking to the city engineer this year, or last year, and the assistant city engineer this year, there is a plan in place already. It's just waiting approval. This, this plan intends to use cement slabs, which have about a 15-year lifespan. I was told that about $268,000 or $300,000 has already been collected from the parking kiosk at Rushbrook. I was also told the reason why the delay in repairing the ramp was because they were waiting for the full amount of the cost to be collected. But the ramp needs repair now, before the summer season. If the repairs aren't completed, completely covered, as yet, they will be in the next two or three years and there will still be another 10 to 12 years to collect monies for the next repair. So basically, there does not seem to be a financial reason not to fix the ramp. As for the $100 annual fee for resident taxpayers, this might very well be cost neutral because more locals are going to buy annual passes. Last year, I bought about five passes, otherwise I took my boat up to a friend's place or launched from Port Ed. The parking lot at Rushbrook would also be better utilized as right now it's half-empty because it's used predominantly by the guides. I must admit that I put little effort into canvassing people's support for this proposal other than talking to some people and putting out petitions at local tackle shops and beer and wine stores. Nevertheless, everyone I spoke was in favor of the proposal and many strongly so. Now, I said more than 100, but actually, I collected some more petitions today and we got 143 signatures from people in town. And I didn't bother to do any online petition, I didn't do any Facebook or anything like that. I just put them, to be honest, the beer and wine store is definitely the place to get a good petition signed. But anyways, there's 143 signatures here, there's quite a few interesting comments and some good ideas as well about the proposal, but I guess I'll just leave it at that and see what the city councillors and the mayor might have for questions. Thanks.
Well, thanks for that. Just so you're aware, and everybody who's here around this issue is aware, that we have a full, a full report coming back to council regarding this issue just very shortly. We actually talked about this briefly at a previous council meeting about a month ago. So part of the reason for that is that because we are a new council, there's an entire history to Rushbrook and a lot of different suggestions and ideas have come up over the years around what the best possible solution is to this issue because I just want you to know that we're definitely hearing you and sensitive to what's happening down there. So what we'll do in the meantime, and I will open this up for some questions from councillors, but what we will do is integrate this suggestion and now that you have 143 signatures, it's obviously that some people are definitely looking at this and, but we're, at this moment, it will be at a later council meeting where we're going to bring this to the agenda as a full discussion item, particularly because we're in budget season at the moment and we're trying to get that through. And just so you know that that is coming on the agenda and it's going to be a full discussion with a full history brief around Rushbrook and now we'll definitely take these items into consideration as well. And is there any questions from councillors? Councillor Nish?
This is to city staff, but do we not already have an annual pass for the, for a $100 pass, I thought it was, or?
Yes, as, as, oh, as Mr. Baker just handed out, it's on the, on the sheet right here, $100 for residential pass.
Am I allowed to speak?
Yeah, absolutely.
$100 would be fine, but if you look at it carefully, it says boat and trailer. Well, nobody's going to go down there with only a truck. We're there to launch our boats, right? So they have trailers with them. So the $200 is just enough that most people aren't going to pay it. That's 20 times you gotta launch. But 100 seems reasonable, but 200 seems like too much.
Councillor Kenny?
I wonder if we could look at a, almost a split pass because like Mr. Baker says, during the winter, that parking lot is empty and possibly, you know, during the summer, if we were to give out a bunch of $100 boat and trailer passes with the parking lot only being half-full now, it might be overloaded? I don't know, but I strongly recommend we do something because in the winter, I don't see why a taxpayer of Prince Rupert should be penalized when they're already paying their taxes and they want to go out fishing for the day and there's an empty parking lot there. I definitely think we've got to do something about the winter months down at Rushbrook on all sides of that parking lot, you know, like a guy runs down for an hour to check his boat and has been getting a ticket, fishermen going out during the day during the winter, you know, there's not a lot of winter activities around here, so going out fishing is one of them and it shouldn't be, they shouldn't be penalized that much.
Councillor Thorperson?
Yeah, I'd be interested to see what the report the staff is coming up with. Certainly, it's, there's many people who park their cars down there in the wintertime and feel that there's discrimination that he has regarding fishermen, particular commercial fishermen, who only park down there with a car. And, and the other day, when it was nice out, the parking lot was already three-quarters full over the weekend. It wasn't, certainly wasn't half-empty. In the summertime, I can attest that it's not empty. You can, you have to park way, even if you just want to park your car, you're parking way down the other side of Canadian Fish. And, and so I was wondering, you know, this schedule is not just for people with boats and trailers. Certainly, there's two different issues. There's the parking issue for, for vehicles. Then there's the issue of people using the boat ramp with their trailers as well as parking for, for trailers. So a trailer, trailer parking, you need more than one parking space or you need those long parking spaces that they have down George Hill Road. And so, so it seems to me that we need to be a little bit clearer maybe with Mr. Baker, than, than what, than, I think we need to, I think that question's been long wanting to, asking to resolve the issue of parking and, and the trailer ramp. Although the, to my way of thinking, parking is one issue, the ramp is another issue. And, and there are two issues and people who are only using it for parking are paying for the Small Craft Harbors Board parking for those people, especially commercial fishermen, but also local people who leave their boats in the water all the time and don't trailer them. They're not paying, they're paying Small Craft Harbors Board for doing that, for the ability to leave their boats in. And so they're just paying not for trailering their, their boats and, and they have no traffic on the ramp. So for the ramp, we have to also pay for the ramp. And so the parking has been paying for the ramp and for pavement of the parking lot, pavement for the access road for the parking lot. So we really need to have a, maybe a more holistic look at, at the whole thing. But I think that, you know, I mean, I brought it up, councillor Cunningham's brought it up last council, I think it was, it was a good topic of conversation about this time every year because fishermen are going down to look after their boats or, or local fishermen are trying to get out into the harbor and weather's starting to get nice and they're getting dinged. So I think we have to resolve the issue.
Now, my understanding that is that we are scheduled to do the ramp this year, is that correct? So that's on our agenda as well.
And would you know when you're thinking of doing the ramp?
We'll be bringing that forward. It'll be included in our report to council.
Great, so that should be coming most likely within the next month. So we'll have that out and we'll, I'll notify via Facebook and things like that, that we'll be having that meeting if you want to come and attend to see that discussion, but just so everyone's aware, we're definitely aware of the issue and we do want to come to resolution around it. So thank you very much for your time today. Oh, councillor Kenny?
Thank you, Your Worship. Wes, it's the non-commercial pass that you want changed from the vehicle and trailer at 200, is it?
Yes, yes, it is, Nelson. Where it says resident pass, vehicle and trailer.
Yeah.
That's the one I'd like to get changed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay, so next up, we have an opportunity for the public to come to comment on the budget. So before we do individual concerns or things like that, if there's anybody here that'd like to come speak to us regarding specifically our 2015 budget presentation that we did last two weeks ago at the PAC that we've put on the website, you feel free to come to the mic and speak to us about today, this year's budget. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak specifically to the 2015 budget? And I'll call one last time, anybody out there that wants to speak specifically to the 2015 budget? Ms. Bombin?
I can provide you my report to council and then, okay?
Do you have the PowerPoint here as well? Oh, okay. Our apologies for that. So, just a process question here then. We did do a public thing and my apologies that you weren't there for that. Today was our, kind of our last opportunity for the public to come to speak about the budget. We tried to make the videos available and those type of things. And I'm guessing at this very moment in time, there might not be that opportunity, but what I would do then is make myself available as well for any questions and comments in my office to come speak to me directly. If you have some specific concerns, then we can go through the budget together that way. But today, we didn't have a scheduled presentation for the budget, so if that would be acceptable to do. Would you like to come chat for a moment about it? Because I can give you guys a quick explanation to where we're at. Absolutely.
I just like to, every time we go through our budgeting, we have an increase, and this year, the increase is minimal, but I often wonder, what does the staff do about reducing costs? Do they think of reducing staff, do they think of where they can make major savings or minor savings? As taxpayers, we're, we're getting elevated taxes all the time. And I would really like to have someone discuss how often they talk about decreasing costs and making them minimal.
Mr. Rose, could you state your name and address just for the corporate administrator as well, just so we have that on record?
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Dennis Rose and I live at 2150 Atlin Avenue.
So I can answer your question?
Yes.
So, what I will do after this, I know that perhaps seen in my office, we have a video of the last presentation we did as well. So what's been proposed this year is a 1.9% tax increase and the reason why, there's a few reasons. First, staff, we can't cut any further than we've cut. The example I use is that we have an engineering coordinator that literally is doing four jobs in one. Our entire staffing arrangement right now has been cut to the bone. Our entire city operation over the last 15 years has basically been cut to a point where we really, there is nowhere else, there is no more where else to look. And when you look at an organization like the City of Prince Rupert and you compare them to some of the other organizations in this community, we are really limited in our ability to, to provide the type of service we would like to provide to this community. So it's not that staff hasn't reviewed that. And as a new council, we've also come in and taken a look at the situation and we also realized that the City of Prince Rupert is in, not in very good condition internally around finances and it's been no secret. One of the reasons though, why we are raising the taxes is because our primary means of collecting income from industrial tax has been legislated to us under the provincial government, that we can't collect the full amount of taxation through those industries. So all of our marine industries are capped at a certain rate, basically in half, so we can only really collect half the income we can collect off our industries. And that's because the province has legislated that into being and have said, look, we'd like our industries to be competitive in BC, particular our marine export industries, therefore, we're going to cap them in terms of how much we can collect tax off them. Well, basically, that means that every industry we have, we can't collect the full rate. So why we're unique and Prince Rupert's unique in that is that Kitimat and Terrace and these other communities, they don't have that cap. They are able to collect the full taxation from their industries. For example, real Tinto Alcan, you know, that's a $4.9 billion project in Kitimat and they are able to collect full taxation off of, off of real Tinto Alcan. And so, you know, that, that's an opportunity they have. We don't have those opportunities here. So at the moment, we have 0% of our industries are under the city's mill rate of heavy industry, which means that the only option that we have that the provincial government has given us is to either raise residential or commercial taxes to collect the resources that we need to run at least just the basics of our services. What we're working on is getting a solution to that problem. We are absolutely working on that and the previous council was working on that and Ms. Thorperson can tell you that she's been working on that for probably her entire time being on this council. And so it's the number one issue because if that were able, if we were able to control the mill rate of these industries that are here, we would most likely not be in the situation that we're in. And because what happens is after, once you get a new industry or like the Peloton, for example, it's capped at a certain rate, the next year, once it's after its inception, that rate depreciates. So we actually start to lose over time. So slowly, the port industry is actually, we've been losing income off of them, which means that they go down and our residential taxes start going up. So we know that's an issue and we know everyone's tired of paying higher taxes and I don't blame anybody for that. At the moment though, where we're at is operationally for us to continue on is with what our core budget is, we need to have about $220,000 extra dollars this year. Now, on top of that, we also have all of these big industries coming in, LNG, you know, six LNG proposals, an estimate between 50 to 100 billion dollars worth of investments. You know, we just had an expansion of the container terminal approved, 250 million dollar expansion. So there's some opportunities on the horizon for us as well and we're really being aggressive in being able to attract and host these industries. That being said, what council has decided or what we're considering doing That being said, what council has decided or what we're considering doing is using some some income that we've collected through our legacy fund, so through some of our arrangements we've done with Exxon, to fuel additional, additional staff resources that we need for planning, for environmental assessments and these types of things, so that we can start handling this growth period. Cause one thing that I have to make the residents aware of is that not only do we have to do business as usual, but we're also having to plan and help and, and work with these six major industries that are needing our attention and time to a whole new level. So that's also taxing our staff. I mean, our managers are, you know, their plate is overly full and they don't have the support apps necessary right now. And I'd love to be able to provide them. So what we've said is, okay, we're going to keep the operation budget certain way this, for this year. And we're going to go on as business as usual, as if there was no growth. But we're also going to see, we're taking some money from legacy to help fund and resource these major this planning for major project situation, so that we're not having to put the burden on the taxpayer for that. So we've kind of approached it innovatively, so that you as a taxpayer is not getting a 20% increase, but it's a 1.9, which when we're comparing right now this year to other municipalities, it's fairly modest. Although we know that there's been accumulation over time. But what I believe is that what's in front of us right now with this budget is, is as cut and as, as thin as we possibly can get. And we're trying our best to get out of that. And I'm working diligently with the province right now to figure out a solution for this cap. For example, one of the solutions we're trying to present to them is saying, hey, look, we understand you have a cap, but it's not sustainable for the long term. What it's doing is killing our small businesses and our residents. And there's no, it's not sustainable. At one point in time, that bubble is going to burst. And we believe that they're becoming aware of that. And so one of the proposals that we're proposing to them is saying, look, you can have a cap on these industries for seven years, but after the seventh year, once they've gotten up and running and they're getting going, then it's time for these industries to come into the city's mill rate, so that we can collect full taxation off them. So these are some of the solutions that we're working towards. Because if that's not addressed, then there really is nothing actually we can do except for either attract large-scale industries like LNG to bring in new tax revenue. But if those don't pan out, the situation isn't sustainable. So the province has to be aware of that. We want to engage the residents on that too. And we're not the only municipality in BC that deals with this. There's another, I think two or three in BC that are also capped. So they experience the same issues as us. So we absolutely understand the concern and this question was also asked at the last budget presentation. But at this moment, this is, these are our tools and our options and unfortunately, the only way a city really collects income is through taxation. But we are working to get LNG on the table because if something like that comes on, then that's going to be a game changer. These are major mega projects that will absolutely take the burden off the taxpayer. And so we're, we're going to be working over the next four years to secure some sort of investment. So that, you know, four years from now, you say, thank you for not raising my taxes. So we're being as proactive and as diligent as we possibly can be. And I can assure you that our staff is working absolutely hard on this. And there is nowhere in our staff that nobody's doing their jobs to strenuous levels. Everybody is doing two jobs at least, I can tell you that for sure. And, and everybody's working full steam ahead. So I'm not sure if that necessarily answers your question.
Yes.
But I think that's as best as I can answer the question at this moment, if that's clear to you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
No problem. Yep, Councilor Thorcason?
I think I saw a draft copy of a letter that taxpayers could sign to write to the provincial government, asking them to release a task, a task cap. Do you know if that, that letter is available or if it's still in draft stage?
Mr. Mandrick, do you have any information on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was sent out just to see if anybody was interested in making any changes to it. And if I received any changes back, I would incorporate those and then have that available for whomever wanted it.
Your Worship, you know, I just, I just want to say that it's, it's more than, it's more than a couple of municipalities that have that same problem. Almost every municipality unless it has a private port and very few municipalities have private port. Kitimat has a private port. That's why they can charge what they like on their taxation rates. But what, what, what we need to do is to, would be better, probably politically better for us is if we could have people of Prince Rupert sign, write a letter of their own or at least sign a form letter and get it into the provincial government. Talking about the issues that our mayor talked about, about the fact that taxpayers are subsidizing large industries that are doing very well, thank you. What, what, you know, as the mayor Brain said is really accurate that that it becomes a taxpayer subsidy, so in many ways. First of all, they don't pay what they would pay if they were not on Portland. And the, the subsidy that the government gives us, the provincial government gives us, so they only, they pay about 22 or between 22 and 27, that's what their mill rate is. A normal mill rate for heavy industry is around 45, let's say, I'm just ballparking it. And so the, the difference is paid by the provincial government, but they don't pay you all the way up to that 45% that the, the rate that they're capping us, the rate that they're giving us is far less than, than what we would have made anyway. Plus, that money that we get is provincial government money. So that, so you're, you're paying it anyway through your provincial government taxes. So the people of, of British Columbia pay taxes to the provincial government and the provincial government takes some of those public tax money and pays us, but they don't pay us what we would have gathered ourselves. Meanwhile, the provincial and federal governments also get taxes that they put into their coffers directly from those agencies. They're taxing their profits and we don't get to tax their, but yet we don't get to tax their properties to the value that they are. If you owned those properties on, on Atlin and had those big huge businesses stuck up there, you'd be paying way more than you'd be paying somewhere else. So those letters should be available fairly soon, I would hope. Mayor Brain and if we could maybe get them at the library and at the civic center where people can pick them up and sign them and pop them in the mail, just have to staple them, pop them in the mail or put them in an envelope, pop them in the mail and send them to, or bring them down to our MLA's office so she can bring them to, to government. But we really need to get a campaign going in our community and maybe this can go to the, there's probably, I would think 10 or 11 at least other communities in British Columbia that are facing, port communities are facing the same problems. You'd be surprised at what weird places have, have ports.
So I just want to clear up here and I, correct me if I'm misunderstanding this, but the port cap, I believe only applies to marine export industries regardless if they're on a private port or on a, on a federally regulated port. And I believe that is the case. So the, the taxation cap from the province only applies to the marine industry itself, the marine export industry, right? So I do believe there's only actually a few communities in BC that are falling under that. I believe that it's under seven communities at least. I can, I'm fairly certain on that unless I'm mistaken, Ms. Bowman?
Last I checked, there was 11 communities that actually had properties that actually fell under this Port Property Tax Act. And it, it didn't matter whether or not it was on Portland or not, it's whether or not they are an eligible industry on and qualify under that act specifically.
Right. Councilor Kenny?
Yeah, I, I agree 100% with Joy there. The only way we can do anything about this is to actually go after the provincial government. What Joy explained though is like anything 2004 previous was capped at 27.5 and the province capped, sort of capped it up. Since 2004, they dropped the, the cap rate to 22.5 and they don't top it up. So it's, it was a double whammy for us to take and, and if you look at, like I'm just looking at what Corinjust did right now, you know, the, the port is capped at 22.5 by the province. It's not the port, it's the province that's doing this. And our local businesses are, last year we're capped at 27.8. So the local small businesses up and down Third Avenue were paying a bigger tax than any of the companies on Portland. And you know, and this is making it very disadvantageous for small companies to even survive in town because they're paying large taxes too. It's, it's something a lot of people don't realize that because of that taxation cap on, on, by the province, it's put Prince Rupert in a very hard position. And not only that, the city was built for 18, 20,000 people and it's since shrunk. So fewer and fewer people are paying their taxes to sustain the services that we had. And I believe, I can be corrected if I'm wrong, but the yard personnel alone was up around 80 at one time. And the last 10, 15 years, it's down to around 58. And yet these people are still, the, the people doing the work around the city are still maintaining the same physical sized city. And you know, it's, it's either taxes go up or services get cut. And I'm the last one to say, close the library, close the civic center or something like that. Cause everyone in this town uses it and enjoys it. So it's a real tough situation for us to sit here sometimes and make these decisions. And if the people of Prince Rupert can start sending letters to the province, it might help. Who knows? Sometimes a squeaky wheel does get oil.
Okay, any other comments from council? Okay, so I'll call up anybody else that would like to talk about the budget. And there's a video online on our website about the budget as well. So you can see that there and the report as well that you've just been handed, that's also on the website as well. Any other questions about the budget? Okay, so now I'll have an opportunity here for questions from the public. So one at a time, we'll have members of the public come and present your issue to council. Come on up.
Just going to get set up, member. Where do I sit where I can be seen at home, Your Worship?
Right there.
Okay, thank you.
And just state your name and your address for the corporate administrator too. Oh, absolutely.
Your Worship, on many occasions, I have my reads not to give my address on Cootney. It's a high problem area where I live and could you respect my privacy not to give my address? I have done it with his, with the other Worship.
Absolutely.
Is it okay by the council members?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you.
Can you state your name first?
Shelley, his first name, Shelley without an E on the end. Middle initial is E and star is my last name, S.T.A.R.R., two Rs on the end.
Great, thank you.
And I would like to speak, may I get a glass of water, Your Worship?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Could I close it? I can get a bit of a glare.
No problem.
I'll put it back when I'm done, Your Worship. Thank you.
I'd like to speak about problems in the community, the City of Prince Rupert.
Okay.
It's vehicles, trucks, container port trucks at five corners here in Prince Rupert. They're running stop signs and not stopping. Fourth Street's another bad location, Your Worship. And Cootney Avenue and McKay is a highly problem area. They're speeding if you were, if it were a racetrack. It is not a racetrack, Your Worship. And city police need to do more. There's a park there. And there's a school zone sign on McKay while there's Cootney Avenue. And the city police are not doing anything. They need to new, to do more patrols. I saw stuff going off of pickup truck last summer. He took the corner too fast and all his furniture came out the back end. There's that U-shaped turn at the bottom of the McKay and Cootney. He lost his load, insecure load. Why is he speeding down McKay? And it's not a racetrack, Worship. And there's small children in there. It's a highly full of children in the summer. And it's a highly populated area with family and another problem I'm going to get to in a moment is there's Park Avenue, Your Worship. There's that hotel. There's a gravel walkway between, it's, there's 1400 Cootney, the office of McCullough Housing. There's a gravel, there's a step that goes to nowhere. And there's pickups going along up and down. We don't know who it is. Is there a way they can, there's not much, there's a bank and there's, it's given way. And there's not much of the gravel bank left because it is washing out when we do have our Montoon rains. A lot of it adds wash down the driveway and it's coming towards Park Avenue. And there's trucks. You can be sure one day a truck's gonna go over to the left or however they they're getting, the bank is just given way. And like, get your, your feedback on that please.
At the moment, I'm not sure what to say. I'd have to look into this one, as far as I'm hearing of this, so.
It's a problem. There's tire tracks there. There's evidence there. The City of Prince Rupert cleaned that area and I thank the city members for cleaning. You know, there's old mattresses in that bush. And I thanked them for cleaning it less than a month ago. It was a nice sunny day and they were clear and brush. But the bank is given way. There's 1400 Cootney here, but there's a gravel path. I use and the community uses as well. Shortcut down to go home or go uptown to get groceries at Overweedy. And I'm just concerned that it's going to take a truck down. Is there a possible city council maybe to put a barrier? But strollers can get through as well, like a concrete barrier.
Right. Well, I can definitely look into that for you, for sure.
I'm not trying to make a cost. I understand we're on a budget constraint. But there are barricades there, really old, but they need to be upgraded. Maybe safety reflectors so they can see they can get not through, set pedestrians and mothers with strollers.
Okay, I'll get, stop to look into that.
And I got other issues, please, Your Worship.
Absolutely.
Cruise ship. It's the cruise ship season, Your Worship, in British Columbia. I was watching Global on TV last night. The first cruise ship going to Hawaii, it left yesterday. So there's the cruise ship and it's the first cruise ship of the year going to Hawaii from Vancouver port. And I have a report from 20, September 2011 here in my hand. It's from Norwegian Star. They did spoke on the issue recently, but the reporter in Prince Rupert made it. She called it the Norwegian Sun. It's the Norwegian Star, the correct spelling. It's the Norwegian Star, the correct spelling. And I have it right here if you wanna see it, your worship. It says here, we will be coming back on page three. What is the council gonna do to get big cruise ships here in Prince Rupert?
Well, I believe there's already a schedule for this year.
Do you know how many, I mean, the one I saw on Global, it's a very nice cruise ship and it's going to Hawaii, but April of twenty fifteen, we'll be getting northbound traffic going to Alaska and hopefully Prince Rupert here in the city. And just wondering, how many cruise ships do we have coming this year?
I, I believe it's uh, I believe we're about, I think, to my understanding, it's about seven this year.
How come the low number, your worship?
Well, just, I'm not exactly sure to be honest with you at the moment.
Are we trying to get the Norwegian Star back? I know it says we will be coming back, but has city council heard that?
Well, what's been done is the port actually has released a draft report so far around the entire cruise ship industry. And um, I believe that this report's gonna be made available to the public on how we can revive the cruise ship industry here. And I think they're still in draft stage around that. Um, there's a variety of reasons why cruise ships come and go here. Um, and I think there's a whole team of people working at attracting them back and there's some plans in place to make Rupert much more attractable for cruise ships. So I already know that's definitely under play. The exact details at this moment, I, I'm not exactly sure. I'd, I'd have to check in with them and it's something I'll put on my, my to-do list here.
Okay, thank you, your worship. Um, I was in a few days ago here in the, in the office and they told me you were out of town, so I said I would be here at tonight's question period and it's nice to be back on question period of twenty fifteen. And this is the first time I spoke twenty fifteen with the new worship uh, in Chambers and it's great to be back in Chambers.
Well, it's great to have you back.
Oh, thank you, uh, your worship. It's nice to be in here, cause I like to get my points across. Another issue is taxi, skiing a taxi. They are running at night with no headlights and no taillights and they have passengers in their vehicles and they're running red lights. I'm in Timmies in the evening sometimes and I'm seeing this near the Rupert Hotel. And they, they have passengers, your worship, families and they're running stop signs at five corners. I'm just shocked. And I like to bring that issue up. Why are they going through stop signs with passengers with, there's cabs who don't have headlights or taillights on? You know, when there's a passenger in a vehicle at skiing a ta, in a cab, their light goes off when there's a fare in the vehicle, their light has to be off. When the car is vacant, it will say the light on top will be on after they paid their fare. But I'm seeing a lot of it, well as regular vehicles in Prince Rupert, Fourth Street, uh, speeding through solid red lights here on Second Avenue West. It just frustrated.
Have you spoken to skiing a taxi with us?
I did put a report in with city police last year and I got a call back by the city police at Prince Rupert that taxi member would be spoken to. And there was me and another woman who's seen it. And I was near the police station, near the library and he didn't stop on six, sorry, your worship, didn't stop at the stop sign, making a right-hand turn, he just ran the stop sign. And I was close enough to the police station, so I walked over, put a complaint in regarding that driver that particular day. But you form the skiing a taxi, we have to go through the police, but I want to get it out on the record. I'm on the record, your worship?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I want it all on record, cause uh, it's terrified. You're waiting, waiting for pedestrian light and they fly by.
So just in the interest of time and we have a lot of folks here who also wanna speak to us.
No, no, I wanna get my point across, I just, you know, I hope you're comfortable with me here tonight in question period.
Oh, absolutely, I just.
You're not, okay.
I definitely hear your issue and um, you know, that's definitely something to be concerned about. But I just wanna make sure that, that we have a whole agenda tonight and we have other folks here who are also wanting to present their issues and if you have other issues then I definitely hearing you, so.
Yeah, okay, your worship.
Just so you know.
Yeah, and for the record, it's this, it's an ongoing problem. I spoke on this many times and city police are not doing anything about it. And the loitering, the skateboarders here in Prince Rupert, that's a problem. Longboarding, they don't care who's on the sidewalk, you, they'll run you over. Skateboarders are a problem, that skateboards and longboarding. And I thought the police were gonna, city police were gonna deal with that issue, your worship, is what I heard to the city council members.
Well, I believe they held a workshop for the longboarders and invited them all to a, kind of a gathering to reiterate safety and all those types of things.
Still a problem, uh, I was riding the, the summit bus up where I live and this longboarder got on the back of the bumper of the city bus and got a ride and the driver did stop, cause another uh, vehicle stopped, said there's somebody bumper skiing on your, on the back of the school, uh, the city bus. And that needs to be looked into. Someone's gonna get badly hurt or run over if they lose their grip on the rear of the, of the bus. And that was just before six PM, I was coming downtown. That was last month. And so for the record, uh, I'm gonna end my comments to your worship and city council. I thank you. It's great to be back in Chambers.
Thanks for coming, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, so I'll call uh, any other speakers that'd like to come speak to the public. Thank you for your time, Mr. Gray. Please state your name and address for the corporate administrator.
Howard Gray, five thirty-one Pillsbury. Um, this was a kind of a follow-up to your first presenter about the parking at Rushbrook Floats. And we've had a, a discussion or there's been a discussion um, on a number of different, different occasions with different counselors and, and yourself. And it has to do with the two-hour uh, grace period that is afforded the Atlin Parking Lot and all of George Hill's Way and Dry Dock Road. It's not just the Atlin Parking Lot. Till you get down to Rushbrook Floats, there is no grace period there. And I think that that, it's an easy solution to the problem and that is just change the signage. Put a two-hour, you know, if you're coming down there and you wanna check your boat, whether you be a commercial fisherman or a pleasure boater or just a visitor to, to the floats, uh, because what, the other part of it that this first chap didn't mention was the parking all over town. If you in the summertime go down to Fairview, um, to the ferries, all you see along the side of the highway on both sides is trucks and trailers. They go down to Rushbrook and this is people from out of town, launch their boats, have someone run the boat down, they drive the truck and trailer down there, there's no restricted parking there. They can park there for three days. The other thing is, is that Rushbrook Floats, a lot of the cars that are parked down there are clients of the charter boat operators, the day boats, not the, not the overnight boats, but they, they buy a day pass, they drive their truck or vehicle or whatever it is down there, buy a day pass and um, uh, not, not that that's a, you know, that that shouldn't happen. But it's a two-hour, it's a two-hour grace period that has had me upset, especially when you go down there. I was down there here just a few days ago and watching the ticket. A person issuing two or three tickets with about six cars parked in the lot. Anyway, that's, that's my comment.
Great. And so what we're gonna do then is all these suggestions will be wrapped up into all of this report that we're gonna get, it's gonna get everybody on the same page. We'll have all the solutions that people have presented to us on the table as well. So, and then we have discussed this before, so it's definitely something that's gonna be brought up. Council Cunningham?
Are you saying that somebody was ticketed in the last month?
Does that uh, work for you? Okay, great, thank you very much. Okay, next, next speaker that'd like to speak to the public or the council here. This is an opportunity from the public to speak to council on any issue they have and just so you know, this is, uh, within this meeting, this is your only opportunity to speak to us, so now is the time to come and speak if you're here to make a case or um, you know, here, have your concerns be heard. I'll call one last time for anybody to come speak to council. Okay, so um, what I'll do is I'll entertain a motion to convene the, convene the whole, move by council Cunningham, second by council Kenny. And we will move into, back to the regular meeting of council. Okay. So we will move down to item eleven A bylaws, a report from the city planner regarding application for proposed uh, quality of life amendment bylaw number three-three-six-five two thousand fifteen and proposed zoning amendment bylaw number three-three-six-six two thousand fifteen for section of Park Avenue. Welcome, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first report is, as you mentioned, for the property located on Park Avenue. I will leave this in same orientation because it probably speaks a little bit here. So uh, recently the applicant purchased the property which is located between the campground and the ferry terminal. And um, as the first step proposes to develop the property which is outlined in red. Uh, the subject, the subject property remained a vacant since inception of City of Prince Rupert. Um, and the portion of property purported, which is proposed for the first phase of the development is, as I said, outlined in red. The quality of life official community plan uh, designates this area as industrial, which is something that's been forwarded from previous official community plans. And um, at the last, at the last official community plan update, um, there was anticipation that the new industry and the new way of doing business will require some amendments and some changes in the future. That was spelled out in the um, official community plan, business industrial policies. The zoning bylaw zones this property, I could make this bigger, couldn't I? Zones this property P one, which essentially signals that uh, any project that would be proposed in this area merits rigorous examination. Um, aside from the land use regulation, this property also, this proposal also suggests extension of the Graham Avenue to Park Avenue and giving the section to a second method of accessing uh, the, the, the location. This part of the proposal is contingent on the applicant purchasing this property from the city and I didn't put the slide that you have in your, in your agendas and this piece of the property from BC Ferries. So seeing all this, uh, the proposed property, the proposed project, I'll just move to the to this uh, slide, has both challenges and opportunities. On top of the opportunities is aspect and um, and the view. And this aspect, the sun and sunlight and daylight is probably one of the prime sites in, in Prince Rupert. And from the um, um, from the view, uh, it is magnificent. It's right at the, at the head of the, of the, of the uh, port, of the channel, of the, what's the word I'm looking for? Harbor, thank you. Uh, one of the more dominant challenges on the other hand is that this property is located at uh, pinched with a variety of transportation corridors. There is the highways, there is a ferry and there is a ferry view docks, um, and there is also a CN. Uh, the applicant is aware of all the challenges and is working diligently with the appropriate agencies, including Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure, which actually is the lead agency when it comes to approval of the access. Um, from the land use perspective, um, residential component of this project is much less intrusive than industrial, industrial uh, land use itself. Um, the added benefit of providing access uh, to section, secondary access to section two, however, is contingent on purchases of these properties and the, and the staff is seeking uh, certainty uh, of this access being constructed um, as part of prior to uh, commitments to the land use regulation approvals. All of this, uh, your, uh, Mr. Mayor, leads to my conclusions, which is that to advance this application to the next stage and before proceeding to public hearing, the following are the steps that staff recommends. For the applicant to conduct an information meeting, for the applicant to confirm certainty of land purchase, for the staff to conduct internal referral, which would include engineering, fire, building department, and for the staff to conduct a referral to MOTI, Ministry of Transportation, Infrastructure, and to determine if referral to DFO is necessary. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Council Thorferson?
I, I have a few. These are on pictures you haven't shown us. So it's, it's on, um, if I look at page sixteen of the package, do you have it numbered the same as us? Okay, it shows a road down. Right, so that shows houses on both sides of the road. And then if we go to um, eighteen, it's the contour plan, the next page. So, so there's no, there's no decision to change the number of houses, the changed number of lots on both sides? The only reason, I was kind of confused because, because there was an amended version that he sent forward and talking about DFO, um, uh, so I wanted to know, so is he, is it being changed or is it remain the same with the same number of lots on both sides of that road? Uh, the proposed road, proposed lots on both sides of the proposed road.
The, the total number is 30. The total, total number of single family lots is 30. That, that, the, uh, the, um, the covering letter is actually a letter that came in with, uh, with some of the initial, initial submissions. And, um, um, I was debating, should I include a letter with the, uh, with the application or not? Because it does provide, as you have probably found, a little bit of confusion. Nevertheless, I included anyways.
Your worship, and maybe that's what the confusion is, because it says on page 23 that since the filing of the original application, number of new factors have arisen, which have resulted in a scaled down application. So that's why I was wondering if I was looking at a scaled down application?
Yes, you're looking at it, not residential. So the, the, uh, the original, you know, I'll come up here. The original, uh, 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 application was for a comprehensive development of this entire site here, which would have included this part as residential, this part as industrial, this part as multifamily residential, and this part as a park. That was the original application.
Uh, thank you. And so then I only have two further questions. And that is one, uh, and I'm looking at the, um, um, page 18 again. And that's, um, it, uh, it, it says toe of fill required to support the Graham Avenue road extension. So is this, is this another lot? And do we own that lot?
The toe hill that, the toe hill that he's referring to on page 18 is the property that was to be purchased from B.C. ferries. And so here, this, this fill would support this road. This does not, um, it is not clear in the application if this is gonna end up creating new lots. But that's something I can clarify with the, with the applicant and definitely something that can be discussed at the information meeting.
And my final question for now is, um, is that, um, uh, we, we passed, uh, we rezoned an area at the end of Graham, I believe, or Vanarsdall, to, um, a condo? And so where is that on, on here? And is that impacting?
That would be located right here. On this lot right here, and this lot was added to this project. So it's not, it's not impacting this project. The only way that it would impact this property is that this property as part of this comprehensive project would have a road to access Park Avenue rather than having to go through the entire neighborhood to go back to town.
Right. And, and the reason I was thinking that was the same road was because of the objections that we had at that public hearing to traffic. So that, that's why I just wanted to know if that was the same area. So I guess I have one last question, but it's a technical one, it's not of this. If, if the city thought that this was a good idea, but wanted to see, um, maybe part of that rezoning to, um, um, from a single family dwelling to multifamily, would, would that be, would that be something that we could talk to the proponent about? Is, is that something that we could do? Or, or is that something we can only change zoning in response to a request? Or can we change zoning on a response to what, what our housing initiatives may be?
A technical question that requires some, um, maybe political argument. Uh, when, um, when applicant submits an application for a certain, for a certain, um, for a certain proposal, council may ask to amend that application. At this time, my responsibility is to provide counsel with the application as it is and analyze it as, as it sits. I think that, uh, public information meeting, which is going to be held, um, at the date that, that the applicant will choose, is definitely a location to perhaps, um, to perhaps ask about something like that. And I will make, I will make a point and I will ask that as being, as it being asked from the, at the council meeting. However, the, uh, the value of the project and the value of the investment for this road, I would suggest would probably garner better, better financial sense if it was, as they are developing a high-end, single-family residential area. That being said, that being said, um, Counsel Thorpason, the applicant has proposed to build a, a multifamily residential development in this area here. And, uh, I think that there are still remnants of, of those words in that particular letter that suggest that that would be built as an assisted multifamily project, assisted housing multifamily project.
Counsel Nishan and Counsel Cunningham.
I would just like, if we go forward with this, uh, public consultation, I had this discussion with you at that, uh, previous public meeting about the church on India, where the letterhead or, or the logo of the city of Prince Rupert should be included in the public notice so that people aren't just looking at something and thinking it's an ad for a company, but rather it's involving the city in there too. So it has the, maybe the, uh, the developer's name on it, but it also includes the city of Prince Rupert's logo so that people are understanding that it's a public meeting for city business.
I will, I will make sure that the, that, that, that there, that there is adequate, uh, information on, on the, on the invitation to show that this city requested public information meeting.
Counsel Cunningham.
Okay, Zeno One, on the properties to be acquired from the city of Prince Rupert, does that in any way influence the 39-unit housing if though that property isn't acquired from the city? Will that have any influence on the project going ahead or not?
That is a certainty that I'm asking from, from the developer to assure us that, that, because the application is clear on its rezoning, but later on it stretches it to properties adjoining. And, uh, it is, it is one thing that I wanted to get through the first reading in order to be asked a question and see the certainty. Therefore, my sentence of staff seeking a certainty on that being, is that, does this road hinge or does the project hinge on a road being developed?
Okay, and my other question is about, uh, the, on, on page 24 here, two associate application applicant is now engaged with the Department of Fisheries and Oceans and with the city of Prince George. I believe it's a typo, but I just want to make sure. I'd like to know why the city of Prince George is involved in a development, because I know the applicant, I believe, is from Prince George.
Yeah, um, even I picked that one up, but as I said, you know, I debated, should I be including this? Because it does bring some ambiguity to his current application. And I liked it to include it because they did put a fair amount of work in putting four pages of words together.
Okay, so the DFO of the Department of Fisheries and Oceans is involved in this application? Because I know there was a problem there when they first went in there and cleared the lot. And I, I'm just hoping that DFO will be involved in this, so there's no problems down the road.
When it comes to DFO in this location, uh, the, the, um, the wetlands that they, that they intruded on are located right here. And the project is located substantially away. And in fact, it doesn't even affect this area here whatsoever. However, there is another creek, and we had the conversation, sometimes in a past of past creeks, current creeks, past creeks becoming culverted and really being creeks and fisheries values. I will seek a clarification from Department of Fisheries and Oceans if this development will impact the drainage that will end up here. And do they require to be as a referral agency?
I'd just like to make sure that they're involved so that halfway through the project, it's not shut down or something. Because if you get a developer from out of town, he might not know local creeks. And I, from what I understand, I was approached by several different people that that's a salmon and a trout-bearing creek. And, uh, there was some damage done to it. And I don't know exactly what's gone on since. But I'd rather like, I'd rather, you know, announce a prevention. Thanks.
Yeah, the area, as I said, the, the area that they recruited in our wetlands, it's here. The creek flows from up here through a culvert that makes a turn. This area here is slightly different, but it's also remnants of an old creek that's been culverted. And there is an open ditch that if you go down today, when it was raining fairly good, you'd probably see it's running like a little creek. You know, and, and so I will seek a clarification, you know. The, the last person that, that wants to see this go halfway through the projects and DFO being involved is myself. I'll make sure of that.
Any other questions from council?
I just, I just want to, uh, make sure that I knew exactly what, what you're proposing. So you're proposing a, a, um, a public information session? And then you're proposing that, then what happens? A proponent comes to council? What's the next step after that, Mr.?
I apologize. So, so first reading, recommending public information meeting is, uh, entrance into the process. After the information meeting is conducted, um, I will be coming to the council seeking second reading and public hearing, following which we will have a public hearing and then reconsideration. The, uh, we usually need about two weeks to do the proper notification in newspapers. So when I advise the applicant tomorrow that, uh, subject to council, of course, given the first reading, he would probably need a minimum of two weeks to arrange for a public information meeting. So that means that, uh, that I would be coming back to the council in two to three meetings for the second reading and public hearing, following which we have another probably two weeks or one council meeting before we go towards public notification and such. And if you like, I can sketch that out in a report at the next meeting.
Any other questions? Okay, so the recommendation that council give first reading to the proposed quality of life official community plan amendment bylaw number 3365 2015. That council give first reading to the proposed zoning amendment bylaw number 3366 2015. That council instructs the applicant to hold an information meeting. The council instructs staff to conduct referrals and that the applicant is to confirm certainty of land purchases. Moved by Counsel Moreau, second by Counsel Rithawa. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Well, moving on to the next report, uh, by city planner regarding rezoning and development permit to allow stuffing of containers at the property located at 1620 Prince Rupert Boulevard.
So this property is, um, maybe. This property is located at, the, the address of this property is 1620 Prince Rupert Boulevard. But it's accessed to the property which is actually located at Prince Rupert Boulevard. And there is a road that accesses the property in question. It is the old Canadian freightways and it is located at the Frederick Street entrance into the city. The proposal is to, um, to rezone, um, to rezone this property from, um, from M1 to M2, uh, in order to allow stuffing of, uh, wrapped lumber, lumber lifts. The process, um, is best explained by looking at their current, at their current, uh, location, which is in the, on Watson Island. This is the storage area, consists of two elements. One is a storage area. This is the storage area in Watson Island if somebody was out there. This is about, uh, probably less than, uh, less than full, but probably an average amount of, of lumber that's, that's located. You can see the tractor trailers, which are approximately 50 feet, uh, for the, for the, for the, uh, for the scale. The second part of the, uh, the second part of the, um, of the operation is stuffing. And it consists of two steps. One is, um, a forklift basically loads the materials onto the platform like this. And it's essentially shoved into the, into the container. After it's shoved into the container, in this picture, if you kind of look your head around, there's a truck that's waiting in a line. It's put in a container and it is sent to, uh, the port facility to, to be shipped to the points east. These stocks of lumber, they come in by flat deck from, uh, points east. The, um, the conundrum in this, in this, in this situation is that we are somewhat similar to the prior, prior presentation, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's, it is a use that we are not necessarily, um, it's not a stock use. We, you know, we do not have it contemplated in our zoning bylaw. And, um, and, um, you know, needing containers, requiring, um, storage and this stuffing procedure, uh, best fits into M2. And therefore, and therefore, um, the proposed amendments consist of basically mapping exercise that will that will rezone this property here to M2 and therefore allow this project to proceed to the, um, to, to be occupied. One of the things that I advise the applicant very strongly is that, subject to council giving first and second reading to this project today, I will be referring to Ministry of Highways. Uh, and again, as in a previous conversation, uh, highway, which is located right here, is a controlled access highway. And so, uh, we will require their comments, uh, before, uh, council can entertain, uh, uh, approval to the, to the, to the process, to the proposal of your, your, your. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor. In spite of my young youthful looks, I've been around such a long time that I can't get rid of your worship. So in conclusion, uh, this is a reasonable approach to circumstances arising from new and more industrial development that, that begs us to think of two things. The new land uses we need to understand and accommodate in the current land use regulations, which is something that we need to do ongoingly. And along the line, we will be looking at the official community plan and zoning byline and looking at uses of this nature to include them in the new regulations. And the need for more developed, developed industrial land base. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions from council? Counsel Thorpason.
All, my concern would be is what else can, um, what else can happen in a M2 that could take place if, if, um, Quick Load walked away from that site and somebody else wanted to use it? I would just be concerned, what are the other uses that are allowed under, under that?
Well, I, it's on, it's on page 26, uh, of the zoning bylaw. But other than, um, the, the big difference is, is going to, is general, is that still used. It's more active, it's more active than the, uh, than the, uh, light industrial use. And it is defined in our, in our definitions in the zoning bylaw, which is on page four, means assembly, manufacturing, warehousing, processing, publication, repair, storage, and transfer facilities for industrial commodities and included services. But that's it. The, you know, I can read it from this if you'd like, from the bow, but it is a higher, higher end of industrial use, not as active as M-three,
Oh, there, oh, the other mic.
Sure. Did you miss all that? Do I have to, do I have to repeat it? Sure, I can repeat it. The question was what other uses there that are not permitted in, in M-three, M-one could be in M-two? And my explanation was without rereading the definitions, that this is a higher, it's a higher use, higher active use of land, but it's not to the level of M-three, which is the, the industrial part itself.
Other questions? Counselor Kenny, then.
Why would we have to consult with the Department of Highways? Wouldn't they be coming off and on on Frederick, which is already an approved road off and on the highway?
So anything within eight hundred meters of the controlled access highway has to be referred to the Ministry of Highways Transportation, which essentially is an entire city of Prince Rupert. And that goes for development variance permit. And so, you know, I do take some latitude and some of the projects that are in the back forty and a, and a hey, you know, I do not refer. But in this specific situation, I think it's a good exercise because Prince Rupert Boulevard is, so to speak, a second access for that neighborhood onto the highway. And the, the number of vehicles that will be introduced in that intersection is something that we do not have core skills in municipal setting. And therefore, highways is a good checkmark to assure that the intersection continues to be both residential and industrial use without conflict.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I just wanted to follow on about one of the questions from the counselor. The, it, sometimes when you're looking for one particular use, which is in a higher zone, such as this circumstance, where we don't have outdoor storage and, but it seems like, as long as council is comfortable, it's a use that, that is applicable with, with that location, we basically exclude all the other uses by covenant. And I think in this circumstance, we should do that. I think what we're doing is trying to deal with just that one issue that was, otherwise it's probably, M-one is probably the correct zone, except that M-one doesn't permit its outdoor storage, isn't it, Zenohan?
The containers.
So I think what, I think what I would recommend is that we restrict all those other uses in the M-two that council might be concerned about. And I, I can, I can see with an M-two use, which kind of moves towards heavier industrial, probably those uses aren't applicable in this location.
Other questions? Thank you. Okay, so a recommendation that council give first and second reading to the city of Prince Rupert zoning. I'll read it out just for the record. Zoning amendment by law number three-three-six-seven-two thousand and fifteen, and a public hearing be scheduled prior to April thirteenth-two thousand and fifteen, regular council meeting. Moved by Counselor Kenny, second by Counselor Nish. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, motion carried, thank you, Mr. Crackit. Okay, now we'll be moving on to any reports or questions or inquiries from members of council. Counselor coming in.
I'd like to know if we could get Richard Pucci, the engineer, to maybe once a month come up. A while back, he was coming before council and giving updates of what was going on in the city so that the public was aware of what was going on? You know, what developments, roads are going to be worked on and things like that in the future? Like the ramp down at Rushbrook or things like that? Just so the, the residents of the city know a little bit of what, what's going on?
Once the budget is passed, that's a great idea. But we first need to pass the budget so he knows what he's going to be suggesting. We're not quite there, just about though.
Okay? Okay. Any other? Counselor Nish?
I just wanted to give kudos to a member of the community right now. It's been all over Facebook, but I believe her name is Chantel Bolton, and she's been doing some cleanup projects around town. And I just wanted to, you know, wish her luck and, and hope she gets a lot of help doing what she's doing. And I, and I appreciate it because I see a lot of areas, I take my dogs all over town and I see a lot of messy areas that need to be dealt with. And good for her.
Yeah, I'll actually reiterate that, the initiative she launched is called Positive Prince Rupert, similar to civic pride type of situation. And she has a Facebook page, basically, that has a weekly, just a schedule, that's, let's just show up here and do some stuff. So it's kind of a neat grassroots thing, and yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Counselor Kenny? Counselor Thorpson?
I just wanted to tell everybody that it was herring season. Not that too many people know, but it still makes an impact on our community. And certainly it has done in the past, and it could do, if herring actually went up in value, could do more so in the future. But it is herring season, and so there are containers with frozen fish moving out to, drive down to Vancouver to be either popped in some non-Indian plants in Vancouver or else over in China. Cheaper the popping, the better, because the federal government has now lifted the law that prohibited raw products such as herring roe to go to China for, for processing. So most of the herring roe that you see coming out of our northern waters now is being processed in China. And, and there's about sixty or eighty shore workers who should have been working six weeks not doing that job. So I just wanted to point that out.
Other reports from council? Counselor Redhawa?
Yeah.
Oh, your mic, I'm sorry.
Like about the Talus, when we, city mayor derangement, city west derangement with Talus, right? We have, we do to have service on Seal Cove area. But since Talus take over, there's no service in that area, and people are really concerned about that. There's no service. And people call Talus company and nothing is happening. So I'm wondering if we, city can write down letter or city best can do something?
Actually, I've heard that concern, and even where I live, I only have one bar. So maybe we can just have staff maybe look into that? And just see if there's anything, because I don't know where their, their towers are and those type of things. And I was actually thinking about that myself, to be honest with you. So I think we can look into, and I'll look into it myself, too. Counselor Kenny?
I want to echo Counselor Nisha's comments about Chantel. And possibly next time she's going to do a cleanup like that, she lets city council know and some of us can show up and show our civic pride. And the other thing is, I'd also like to bring to everyone's attention that it's the seventy-fifth anniversary of the credit union. And they do a lot in the community, and they should be recognized for it. I don't know, maybe just if city staff could send them a letter thanking them for the seventy-five years they've done business in Prince Rupert and the many, many activities they've sponsored.
Better yet, I'll send them a letter. Okay. Just for the record, that you have to get a Facebook account, Counselor Kenny, because that's where all, that's where everyone's at now.
I'll piggyback on yours.
But I will call you on the telephone. Okay, so I'd like to entertain a motion, and if there's nothing left for counselors to report on to adjourn tonight's meeting and to reconvene our recessed closed meeting under section ninety of the community charter, which have already been stated. Moved by Counselor Kenny, second by Counselor Nish. Okay, so tonight's council meeting has been adjourned, thank you very much.